...tired behind the rail. And we will have our invocation. And this morning, the Chair recognizes vicar John Nelson of Saint Matthews Lutheran Church in Morristown, New Jersey. Welcome. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Bobby Heenan. I would ask all members and guests and visitors to please rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to thank Council President Clark and Councilman Heenan for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Thomas Jefferson once said, "I never considered a difference of opinion in politics, in religion, in philosophy, as cause for withdrawing from a friend." In the spirit of coming together, something that's going to be important given the tumult of this election season, I wanted to share some words from bipartisan dialogues ongoing between Lutherans and Catholics. This document entitled "From Conflict to Communion" delivers a message that is deeply needed not only in the religious sphere, but in the political sphere as well. It states, "Catholics and Lutherans have through dialogue learned a great deal and come to appreciate the fact that communion among them can have different forms and degrees. With respect to 2017, they should renew their efforts with gratitude, for it has already been accomplished, with patience and perseverance, since the road may be longer than expected, with eagerness that does not allow for being satisfied with the present situation, with love for one another in times of disagreement and conflict, with faith, with hope, and with earnest prayer. As we come together once more to lead and guide this great city, let us pray. Almighty God, bless the public servants in the government of this city of Philadelphia. May they do their work in the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. Give them grace to work for our city so that our neighborhoods remain vibrant and whole, so the lost and forgotten may be supported, and that diverse fabric of our streets and wards may be a delight to all. Amen."
Amen. Thank you so much for those very inspiring words. Counselor, be at ease. Thank you very much. And before we start our agenda, I would like to take a moment, and I don't know if I'm sup- I was supposed to say this a little earlier when it wasn't on TV, but I would like to take this moment to thank and say happy birthday to our wonderful colleague, Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Happy birthday, Councilwoman. Thank you. Awesome. We wish you many more. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 27, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 27, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. The Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 2017, 27, 2016 stand and approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is opposed. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilman. Leave shall be granted. And on behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman Brian O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and thank everyone who has come down to witness their government in action. We really appreciate you taking time out of your busy day. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one and a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much. This time, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing Vernoka Michael with Ms. Michael, and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilman O., Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brown, Councilwoman Segem Parker, and Councilman Taubenberger, and Councilman Johnson.
We tried.
And Councilman Green. And Councilwoman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphian Vernoka Michael for her exemplary service to the city of Philadelphia, with special acknowledgement of her leadership at the legendary Blue Horizon and her work in West Philadelphia at the Paul Robeson House. Whereas Vernoka is the daughter of the late Reverend Dr. E. Raphael Michael, pastor of Wellesley AME Zion Church, and Mrs. Elizabeth A. Michael, second vice president, International Missionary Society of the AME Zion Church. She is a 50-year member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and this is where it gets heavy. Vernoka is a graduate of Girls High School of Boston, Massachusetts, attended Harvard University and the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, MIT, for special studies, completed her bachelor's degree at Livingstone College, and received two master's degrees in community organization and city planning, and did additional studies at the University of Pennsylvania in business and finance and law.
Whereas Vernoka has, whereas Vernoka was the co-owner and CEO, president of the legendary Blue Horizon, the number-one boxing venue in the world cited by Ring and Sports Illustrated magazines. Vernoka also became the first African-American female licensed boxing promoter and established three boxing businesses. She was voted promoter of the year for 2009. She was the first African-American female to have her boxing on ESPN. Several years ago, she launched the Philadelphia Boxing Museum, designed to highlight Philadelphia's great history in boxing. The Blue now celebrates 52 world champions who have fought there. While the legendary Blue Horizon is known for the Rocky films, Vernoka was instrumental in getting AMC to film the remake of Rocky and Disney to film Annapolis there, and...
Whereas Vernoka was featured in Wa- in The Washington Post, Sports Illustrated, Ring magazine, Everlast, and The Philadelphia Inquirer, The Chicago Tribune, The Philadelphia Tribune, Philadelphia Daily News, Philadelphia Sunday Sun, The Philadelphia New Observer, The Israeli, Montreal, and Hawaiian News, Sweden's top boxing magazine, The English and Spanish Press, Delaware County Times, and The Philadelphia Business Journals, just to mention a few. She has appeared on Canadian, Swedish, German, and Russian TV, as well as in commercials and public service announcements for the city of Philadelphia and for a commercial for President Barack Obama.
Whereas, an award-winning inter- entrepreneur and renowned motivational speaker, Vernoka L. Michael, has spoken for all types of audiences, universities, businesses, organizations, televisions, and radios. Currently, Vernoka is giving leadership to the West Philadelphia Cultural Alliance, Paul Robeson House, to assist the growth of its programs. Vernoka was included in a documentary on Paul Robeson and is featured in the book, Stories from the Paul Robeson House, and...
Whereas Vernoka Michael has participated and led in many ventures, including founding NEA Cumba, a nonprofit organization serving over 18,000 young people, from 19 colleges, 13 high schools, three training centers, and court-appointed persons stepping in as the executive director of the Domestic Abuse Agency in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, setting up base service units, group homes, and shelter workshops in Philadelphia, assisting in establishing the Philadelphia AIDS Consortium, and chairing the regional HIV AIDS, and started her career as the first African-American manager of allocations for the United Way of Pennsylvania. America, correction, United Way of America.
Whereas Vernoka Michael has received many accolades for her work in the community. In 2010, she was cited by Mayor Michael Nutter and Governor Edward Rendell for her outstanding work in the community with students. Additionally, she has received over 70 awards, including Temple University's Fox Business School Community Partners Award, Pennsylvania Business Journal's Best 50 Women in Business in Pennsylvania, Madam CJ Walker Award, the Mover and Shakers Award, recognized by Philadelphia City Council for her work in cancer, and inducted into the African-American Hall of Fame, and...
Whereas Vernoka Michael has always been actively engaged in her community. For years, she was block captain in southwest Philadelphia, and she also served on the council of the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, testifying on their behalf and volunteering for the flower show, while also fulfilling her passion while visiting the sick and aged and visiting and corresponding with prisoners. Whereas each day after her meditation, Vernoka writes positive articulations on cards and passes them out to anyone who comes in contact with her, and I thank her for my card I received this morning. For over 25 years, she has been noted for hugging all those coming into her presence, including her boxers and her audiences.
Now therefore, be resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors Vernoka Michael for exemplary service to the city of Philadelphia with special acknowledgement of her leadership at the legendary Blue Horizon and her work in West Philadelphia and the Paul Robeson House, and... Further resolved, that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Vernoka Michael as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition. And the Chair recognizes Ms. Michael for remarks.
To the President of Council, Carol Clark, who serves in the district for the Blue Horizon, has always been a supporter, to Councilman Blackwell, who serves as the councilperson for my own home address, and to these other councilpersons, I'd like to thank you for this honor. I have always been interested in supporting my community, and the Lord has blessed me to be able to do His work in the community. And so I find that it is a privilege to have served Philadelphia in many capacities, and I thank all of you here today for your support in the efforts of both the Blue Horizon and now the West Philadelphia Cultural Alliance, the Paul Robeson House. Thank you so much for this honor, and I have given to each member one of my cards because I always pass them out wherever I go. Thank you so much.
Counselor, be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing Mary L. Oglesby with Mary Tooks, Leonard Oglesby, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilman Jones, and Councilman Dom.
Come right up. Come up on the podium. Thank you, dear. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome.
Resolution adding Mary L. Oglesby to the street sign, the block intersection of 50th and Arch Streets, in recognition of Ms. Mary L. Oglesby's tremendous service and contributions to this West Philadelphia community.
Whereas Mrs. Oglesby was born in Montezuma, Georgia, as the oldest of 10 children. As the eldest child in her family, she worked with her mother to help raise her siblings. This experience helped instill the importance of family in her. And whereas Mrs. Oglesby had eight children of her own, two with her first husband, Dan Tooks, and six with her second husband, Oscar P. Oglesby, and...
Whereas, in 1958, Mrs. Oglesby and her family moved from Georgia to West Philadelphia in a neighborhood known as The Black Bottom, a place where many African-Americans migrated during the 1930s through the 1950s. And whereas, for many years, Mrs. Oglesby worked hard as a cook and housekeeper in other people's homes, and though through her labors, she was able to buy a house for her family at 5043 Arch Street, Philadelphia, PA, fulfilling her longtime dream of owning her own home, and...
Whereas in the hopes of bettering her community, Mrs. Oglesby helped to establish the Dunlap Community Center at the corner of 51st and Arch Streets. And whereas Mrs. Oglesby hoped that the Dunlap Community Center would be a family environment for the community where people could come and enjoy various services such as having a place for children to play and a place where adults could come and find employment, and...
Whereas during her time in West Philadelphia, Mrs. Oglesby's home was always open to others, and she made everyone feel at home with her greetings, food, and wisdom. Every morning for more than 40 years, she would provide words of encouragement to all those who walked by her home. And whereas she became known as Big Mama for all who knew her and lived in her neighborhood. Sadly, she died on Friday, December 26, 2014. However, she has left a legacy of love that still continues to ripple through her community even after she is gone.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby adds Mary L. Oglesby to the street sign on the block intersection at 50th and Arch Streets in recognition of Ms. Mary L. Oglesby's tremendous service and contributions to the West Philadelphia community. Further resolved that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to the family of Mary L. Oglesby as a sincere expression of Philadelphia City Council's gratitude, recognition, and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Ms. Tooks and Mr. Oglesby for remarks.
We would like to say thank you for this resolution for my mom. We miss her deeply, but we, as a family, will carry until we pass, because her thing in the community was take care of everybody. Every year, before her birthday, we would all cook and feed whoever walked through the street in the community, and that was her, her gold. That was her, that was her life, serving everyone in her community, always a place to come. She would always say, "I will feed anyone that comes through my door." There has many people have come in, it's like a revolving door. All, everyone in the area knows her as Big Mama, and we miss her, and they also do. Thank you very much.
I'm the youngest out of, out of eight, and, you know, I'm not one with a whole lot of words, but I just want to say this. One of my mom's favorite songs was "Blessed by the Best," and we're going to try to carry on what she started off doing, and family is everything, and that's what we want to keep. It's hard, because you can look out here today and families have been broken up by little things, but we're trying to keep everything together. It's tough, it's hard, but we're going to do it in honor of my mother. Thank you.
Counselor, be at ease. Thank you. The Next Order of Business is Communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November 1, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on October 20, 2016. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the ratification and First Amendment to the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Brewery Town Urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1401 through 1424 North 31st Street, 1415 through 37 North 31st Street, and 1421 through 27 North 32nd Street, including 3129 through 45 West Masters Street. And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the establishment of best value contracting practice and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. And in ordinance, providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter establishing a lowest responsible bidder provision. And in ordinance, amending section 171404 of the Philadelphia Code and added eligibility for non-competitively bid contracts and financial assistance to provide for requirements relating to contract awarded pursuant to the proposed best value provisions of the Home Rule Charter. And in ordinance, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to acquire an approximately 3.4-acre property known as 4848 Island Avenue. And in ordinance, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property of the City of Philadelphia on behalf of the City of Philadelphia and in cooperation with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to undertake a project to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Philadelphia, authorizing and approving a project including the refunding of bonds issued to finance the new youth center facility, an amendment to an existing ground lease between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on November 1, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on October 20, 2016. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the ratification and First Amendment to the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Brewery Town Urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1401 through 1424 North 31st Street, 1415 through 37 North 31st Street, and 1421 through 27 North 32nd Street, including 3129 through 45 West Master Street. And a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the establishment of best value contracting practice and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. And in ordinance, providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter establishing a lowest responsible bidder provision. And in ordinance, amending section 171404 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Eligibility for Non-Competitively Bid Contracts and Financial Assistance to provide for requirements relating to contract awarded pursuant to the proposed best value provisions of the Home Rule Charter. And in ordinance, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to acquire an approximately 3.4 acre property known as 4848 Island Avenue. And in ordinance, authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property of the City of Philadelphia on behalf of the City of Philadelphia and in cooperation with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to undertake a project to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Philadelphia, authorizing and approving a project including the refunding of bonds issued to finance the new youth center facility, an amendment to an existing ground lease between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, an amendment to an existing prime lease between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and the assignment of such amendment to a trustee, and the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay rent under the prime lease, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Those messages will be printed in today's journal. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President. I offered one bill and one resolution this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Chapter 14, 300, entitled Administration and Procedures by changing the composition of the Civic Design Review Committee and adding additional criteria for review.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging President Obama and the United States Congress to require the United States Department of Environmental Protection to change the obligated-party mechanism in the Renewable Fuel Standard Program from refiners and importers of gasoline and diesel to the companies who blend renewable fuels in order to avoid adverse economic impacts.
Next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have two bills and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance authorizing Hospitality III to construct, own, and maintain certain encroachments at the northwest corner of Chestnut and 33rd Streets. And in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property of the City of Philadelphia on behalf of the City of Philadelphia in cooperation with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority to undertake a project to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Philadelphia, authorizing and approving a project including the refunding of bonds issued to finance the new youth center facility, an amendment to an existing ground lease between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, an amendment to an existing prime lease between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Municipal Authority, and the assignment of such amendment to a trustee, and the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay rent under the prime lease.
And they will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution adding Grace H. Daniels Way to the street signs on the 800 block of 46th Street between Parish and Westminster.
And that will be in our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution adding Reverend William J. Shaw Way to the street signs on the 100 and 200 blocks of South 53rd Street between Chestnut and Walnut Street.
And that will be our next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Spring Garden Street, Broad Street, John F. Kennedy Boulevard, and the School of River.
Refer to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 5th and 37th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
In our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the ratification and First Amendment of the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Brewery Town Urban renewal area identified by house number and street addresses as 1401 through 24 North 31st Street, 1415 through 37 North 31st Street, and 1421 through 27 North 32nd Street, including 3129 through 45 West Master Street.
And that will be on our next session of council final passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Three bills and one non-privileged resolution, two bills and one resolution co-introduced with Councilmen Green, Squillaw, Parker, Jones, and Johnson.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 325 by relocating portions of certain house lines and curb lines in the vicinity of the intersection of the Roosevelt Boulevard, Sully Avenue, Home Avenue, and Parkessing Avenue. And in ordinance, providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter providing for the award of certain contracts based on best value to the city under certain terms and conditions. And in ordinance amending section 171404 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Eligibility for Non-Competitively Bid Contracts and Financial Assistance to provide for requirements relating to contracts awarded pursuant to the proposed best value provisions of the Home Rule Charter.
Those three bills will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the award of certain contracts based on best value to the city.
And that resolution will also be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one resolution, non-privileged, on my behalf, co-sponsored by you, by O., by Green.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department and Department of Commerce to develop a plan to equip every major commercial corridor within Philadelphia with surveillance cameras.
And that will be on next session's final passes calendar. You have no ordinance, no ever built. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Johnson, I submit three privileged, one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to acquire an approximately 3.4 acre property known as 4848 Island Avenue.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and remembering Harold B. Hairston, the City of Philadelphia's first African-American Fire Commissioner, who passed away on November 1, 2016 at the age of 76.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the council committees on streets and services and transportation and public utilities to hold hearings examining the opportunities for expanding Philadelphia's network of buffered and protected bike lanes.
This week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Torego Flint for his heroism and the courage and bravery he exhibited while protecting his fellow citizens in Rittenhouse Square Park on October 18, 2016.
And next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming South 11th between Patterson Avenue and South Tharian Street, Ed Snyder Way.
Mr. Decker, I want to make a correction. The third resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the last resolution will also be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination by adding a requirement that the Human Relations Commission inform the Department of Licenses and Inspections of violations of this title.
And that will be referred to committee.
And in ordinance amending Chapter 19, 2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Tax by conditioning receipt and retention of commercial activity licenses on abiding by the Fair Practices Ordinance.
And that will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring the links on the 70th anniversary of its founding in Philadelphia.
This week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Quinones Sanchez, Johnson, Blackwell, Green, Bass, and Heenan.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections and Committee on Public Health and Human Services to conduct hearings concerning the impact of eviction and substandard housing on the health and well-being of low-income renters and examining solutions that would improve the safety and stability of rental housing, including the right to counsel.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubman-Burgh.
Good morning, Council President. Colleagues, I have no bills nor resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution, and I'd like to be heard after it's read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution strongly urging the Department of Commerce's Office of Economic Opportunity to significantly hasten its production of the annual participation report, which is required to be provided to City Council and the mayor on or before November 1 of each year.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on next week's final passes calendar. I'm sorry, next session's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I offer one privileged resolution on behalf of Council President.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating the veterans of Philadelphia and its surrounding counties in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware, Philadelphia Veterans Parade, Inc., and the Philadelphia Veterans Advisory Commission on the occurrence of the 2016 Philadelphia Veterans Parade.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business will be reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs.
The Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs, which is referred Bill Number 160329, entitled in ordinance renaming and designating Daisy Field as David Montgomery Field in the City of Philadelphia, and Bill Number 160611, entitled in ordinance officially naming and designating the park and playground area located on 61st Street and Baltimore Avenue in the City of Philadelphia as Robert Wilson III Park. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. And the Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 160329 and 160611.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160329 and 160611. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar, and I note that the bills just deemed, just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes calendar in our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Council President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for a second reading and final passage of today's calendars. Bill Numbers 160952, 160709. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that's on the final passes calendar today, if you have not already done so, ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers and the podium, and there's a device on that podium. When a light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When a light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When a light turns red, we ask that you plead adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to speak. I hope, thank you for your consideration for adhering to our guidelines. Mr. Decker, please call the name on the list.
Joe Denahell, commenting on 160952.
Good morning.
Morning.
As counterfeited, God-given rights, the rule of law, numerous official decrees, and the will of the sovereign people. As government of the people, by the people, and for the people perish, has council and its agents and agencies involved gathered verifiable and auditable constituent approval to justify each and every action and inaction. Without such approval, is it taxation without representation? Is this egregious, extraordinary behavior allowed? Or criminal trials required for violations of 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, Oath of Office 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2384, 2381, PA Constitution, Article 1, Federal Constitution, Bill Rights, among others unnamed. The taking of my home at 1038 West Wyoming Avenue without just compensation and denied trial by jury, which several officials in this very room opposed my God-given rights, requires remedy immediately. This council has never stopped and quit funding and stopped using the Redevelopment Authority, District Attorney's Office, C. Comptroller's Office, and the Sheriff's Department as several official decrees have required. In fact, council members regularly do not pay attention or leave the room while official decrees are given. King George would be very proud, but the millions who sacrifice so that you can represent the sovereign people feel betrayed. They risk their lives serving America. You do not. You are bound by oath and law not to violate the oath and law. It takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monumental corruption. This is an official decree and must be acted upon immediately. Robeson has quoted, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but to end the injustice."
Thank you very much for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to our calendar. And can you read the title of 160952?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District in accordance with terms of Chapter 16, 700 of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 160952 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160709.
And ordinance amending Chapter 17, 100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Procurement Contracts by further providing with respect to the local bidding preference, including but not limited to provisions concerning penalties, requirements necessary for certification and recertification, and further providing for the relationship between prime contractors and subcontractors.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, this morning I offer an amendment to Bill Number 160709. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I therefore move for the adoption of the amendment.
The amendment to 160709 has been introduced and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 160709 has been amended. It will be on our second and final passes calendar in our next session of council. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and remembering Harold B. Hairston, the City of Philadelphia's first African-American Fire Commissioner, who passed away on November 1, 2016 at the age of 76, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Can I ask for we do a standing silent?
Absolutely. Thank you. That resolution is adopted. Councilman.
Council President, point of information, just want to add clarity that it was a standing vote count for the resolution for parliamentary procedure?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's your standing.
The standing was a vote in the affirmative.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's what you meant. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
A resolution authorizing the council committees on streets and services and transportation and public utilities to hold hearings examining the opportunities for expanding Philadelphia's network of buffered network of buffered and protected bike lanes, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Tarego Flint for his heroism and the courage and bravery he exhibited while protecting his fellow citizens in Rittenhouse Square Park on October 18, 2016, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair, one more time recognizes Councilman Johnson.
That bill was co-sponsored by Council President Darrell Clark, Council President Allen Dom, and all other members of council. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the links, Inc., on its 70th anniversary of its founding in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Say, Green. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections and the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to conduct hearings concerning the impact of eviction and substandard housing on the health and well-being of low-income renters and examining solutions that would improve the safety and stability of rental housing, including the right to counsel, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the veterans of Philadelphia and its surrounding counties in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware, Philadelphia Veterans Parade, Inc., and the Philadelphia Veterans Advisory Commission on the occurrence of the 2016 Veterans Parade, introduced by Councilman O. on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our calendar for today. And behalf of the minority, we will seek questions and speeches. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just want to, on your behalf, alert the public that this Sunday at 12 noon, we will have the Second Annual Philadelphia Veterans Parade. The parade will start from City Hall, march down East Market Street to Independence Mall. Over 150 participating organizations will be involved in this march, which honors our nation's heroes, our veterans, our military. Also, this year, for the first time, we'll have a Veterans Festival at the end of the parade, which includes entertainment, activities, service organizations, food, and more. So, everyone, please come out, show your appreciation, have a great time celebrating our veterans here in Philadelphia. For more information, visit PhillyVeteransParade.org. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen. And I understand, I'm not at liberty to say, but at around 12:32, there's going to be a very, very special event.
That's what I was going to say.
Thank you. Speech is on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I rise to tell Donald Trump that the 1960s call, and they want their policies back from him. It is insulting to members of the, that the members of the African-American Freedom Party believe that inner-city Philadelphia can be bought for a 40-ounce and a bag of weed, and that the energy of the Trump candidacy has alarmed them, and that the election is rigged. And therefore nationalists, alter-right, paramilitary groups are planning to converge and come in and offer us a bag of weed and a 40-ounce for our votes.
I wish they would, on the money.
It is incredible and an insult to those who struggle, marched, died, bled, for the right to vote. For the nationalist socialist movement, for them to come together in a coalition. They don't agree on a lot of things, but they agree on that the election is rigged, and that they're going to come and save Donald by coming in here with a bag of weed and a 40. I've had people tell me, you know, that they are coming, and that it is true. This was reported also by Politico, which is a recognized news outlet. It harkens back to the '60s in Alabama when segregated Governor George Wallace suppressed the vote. Please tell Donald Trump the '60s call, and that those policies, they need to go back. So, to quote the First Lady, Michelle Obama, "When they go low, we going high. And we will not be moved by scare tactics or anything else." One of the things about inner-city voters, we either vote for, or we come out and vote against. And Donald Trump is giving us two reasons, the vote for Hillary and the vote against him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Jones, in his commentary, reminded me of how far we've come as a nation, but we still have some challenges here in the city of Philadelphia. A few weeks ago, I made some comments regarding a bar owner in the city who was videotaped using the N-word discussing patrons that frequent his bar at times. And as a result of that unfortunate video and a lot of the challenge and consternation and issues and discussions regarding race, the Commission of Human Relations had hearings on October 25th to discuss this issue, especially in reference to members of the LGBTQ community in the city of Philadelphia and the concerns that were raised. So, on October 25th, I had a chance to attend the Commission of Human Relations hearing along with Mayor Kenny. I know Councilman Squilla was there, as well as members from Councilman Sanchez's office and Councilman Gim's office were there as well. And we heard a lot of passion, a lot of concerns about issues in that community, some going back 30 years. I ran into an activist I knew for some time, Tyrone Smith, and he was really pained by the fact that this issue is still going on in part of our city. And so, based on that hearing and the comments and the concerns, I decided to introduce a bill today which ties our Fair Practices Ordinance with our commercial activities license. There's no reason why a business operating in the city of Philadelphia that is violating our Fair Practices Ordinance should be able to operate in the city of Philadelphia. We give that business a privilege to operate in the city of Philadelphia, and if they are violating our Fair Practices Ordinance, they should not be able to operate in our city. So, I know this legislation will engage hearings and conversations and will provide an opportunity for other people to become educated about this issue, which I learned a lot on October 25th, and I think is an important issue for our city as we continue to move forward if we're truly going to be the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. And I'll just close by saying one last quote. "Although laws alone cannot foster a culture of inclusion, we must come together to protect and celebrate our fellow citizens and challenge those who seek to discriminate." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to let my colleagues know that on your desk is an envelope with the letter inviting you to opening of the Electrical Spectacle of Franklin Square, which is Sixth and Ray Streets, next Thursday, November 10th at 4:30. I hope you can join me. The light and the music show continues through the holiday season. If you're not available next week, please try to take your time and get over and check it out. It's a great event. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduced a resolution calling on the Office of Economic Opportunity to significantly hasten its production of the annual participation report, which is required to be provided to city council and the mayor on or before November 1st of each year. We received a letter dated November 1st to all members of city council from the Office of Economic Opportunity indicating that the annual participation report would not be completed on or before the deadline of November 1st, which is required by Executive Order 3-2. The letter further indicated that because of recent personnel changes, the report would not be ready until the end of January 2017, approximately 90 days past the deadline. Furthermore, city council was only notified of OEO's failure to timely complete the report on the actual final date when the report was due. And why does this matter, some might ask? The lack of timely production of this report makes it extremely difficult for city council to exercise its oversight functions with respect to assuring meaningful and legal participation levels for women, minorities, and disabled-owned businesses and city contracts. The data contained in the annual participation report is particularly critical this year as a city embarks on its largest public works initiative ever, to rebuild parks, recreation centers, and libraries. We, as a body, cannot be expected to move forward on these important projects without it, especially based on previously raised concerns. And so, we strongly urge the Department of Commerce's Office of Economic Opportunity to significantly hasten its production of this very important report and provide it to city council as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
So, I'm going to deal with the elephant in the room today. SEPTA's not running. Thousands and thousands of workers have taken to the picket line about economic issues, about workplace issues, about fairness issues, and I think it deserves at least some discussion, or at least my comment. TWU and SEPTA can't seem to come together. For the average person in a barber shop, beauty salon, trying to get to the grocery store, this is devastating. Uber has made record profits out of this. We have a looming election coming up where we are going to be counted on in Philadelphia to deliver the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and these are the way, you know, people said, "Well, you know, the reason why they put polling places right near people is how so they could walk." But if you have to ride in to work an hour extra in the morning and an hour extra at night, there are a few people that are just not built to do that extra out. They have kids, they have other responsibilities to deal with. So, I'm urging that we solve this. And there are a lot of people in the background, I know, you know, I know you've been involved, Mr. President, other elected officials in this room, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, and others. I know about the cause. But we need to get serious about it, because there are some issues of unfairness here. Now, let me say this. If you, Mr. President, got a different pension from me, and I'm paying the same amount as you, I'm going to have a problem with that, right? If after your budgeting, and you are a frugal man, you decide that, "Councilman, we're going to put another $300 on your health benefits for your family," I may have an issue with that. And if I can't go to a bathroom break, and if I can't take a break in between rides, you are putting the ridership of Philadelphia in danger. Fatigue touches us all, and these are issues of fairness. These are issues of equity. They represent a middle class within many of our districts and many of our communities. So, I'm going to deal with the elephant in the room and say, "Get those buses rolling." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. And for the record, we have the same pension plan for anyone who may think that we don't. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen, for those very, very important words, because we do need to get our city moving again. It has a significant economic impact on a lot of people, so we need to get that done. There are no additional speeches. On behalf of the majority and minority, so with that, I recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 17th, 2016 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. That council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 17th, 2016 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it.